Excellent. Thank you. All right, so we're on to, I don't have any chairman's announcements. Is there anybody here for anything that is not currently published on our agenda? Seeing as there isn't, we have the public hearing for the Oktoberfest Committee for a special one-day liquor license. Do you want to make a motion to open the public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
May be seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we have, Mr. St. Pierre was the chairman of the Oktoberfest Committee. Come on up.
Difficult for what we've done for the last several years. We've got a beer garden as part of the event. And we have our application for doing that. We do it, we do it very tastefully. We do it at a craft brewer. We select a different craft brewer every couple of years so that we can mix in the area of local fruit. That's really what it's about.
Did you get treehouse this year?
What was that?
Did you get treehouse?
They're on our list. We'll get to them eventually.
All right, and the Historical Society agrees to allow the Oktoberfest Committee to use the grounds behind the Jenks store. And their application is completed and informed, they said?
Yes.
Any issues from abutters?
They were notified.
Does anybody care to make a motion on this?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Keep the momentum going and make a motion to approve a special one-day liquor license for the Oktoberfest Committee.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Awesome.
You're all set? Thanks, Don.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, so the next agenda item is we have the Midstate Massive Ultra Trail Race 2022 road use and possible votes.
Hi, guys.
How are you, Rich?
It's Andy tonight.
Sandy.
Sandy. Sandy with the banana shirt.
With the banana shirt.
Yeah.
It's pretty routine. Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. So, the police chief shows that he has no concerns on this. We actually have the fire and chief and assistant chief, no concerns on this at all?
No concerns.
They, you're not requiring any EMS detail on this one?
Not this one, no.
Not this one, no.
Could I ask why not? I know in previous races, that wasn't something that you guys were pretty adamant about. Why not this one?
So I know it's a hundred-mile trail race, and the fifty-mile trail race and the thirty-mile trail race. So we found that those individuals are pretty party and they are able to find their way out from wherever they're going. And if we're gonna need to respond out there, it's gonna be a full department response. It's gonna require more than just an EMS detail. And the fact that they're not riding, we typically need these details when people are riding bicycles on the road. Where they would take away resources from the town. So in this case, we're not concerned with this event taking away from town resources unless it generated a full department response, which we would all go out and deal with anyway.
Anybody have any questions?
I guess the only thing I could share is that we've missed seeing Corey Stevens at the finish line. Yep. We run right through his backyard.
Nice.
Yep. But no, I agree with the assessment of the fire department. And if we have any issues, we'll make sure to, you know, to call 911.
All right. Congressman love the idea that other members can make these motions. I will make one more. And I would make a motion that we allow the Midstate Massive Ultra Trail Race in 2022 to use our roads.
Second.
As outlined in our packet.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You're all set. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. See you next year.
All right, third agenda item is in our packet, there's a proclamation to recognize the month of September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Douglas. This request was sent in to me from the Kids Cancer Connection and the American Cancer Fund for Children Incorporated. So...
Ooh, approval.
Hold a second.
Okay, so I will actually, based off of a motion that's been made and seconded, is there any discussion on this? All right, seeing as none, can I get a vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the proclamation is as follows. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection report cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among U.S. children between infancy and age fifteen. This tragic disease is detected in more than sixteen thousand of our country's young people every year. And an estimated four hundred thousand children and adolescents are diagnosed with cancer globally each year. And whereas one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer, many infants, children, and teens will suffer from long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers. And whereas, founded nearly thirty years ago by Steven Feierstein, a member of the philanthropic Max Factor cosmetics family, the American Cancer Fund for Children, Inc., Kids Cancer Connection, Inc., and Lions Clubs International are dedicated to helping these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provide a variety of vital patient psychological, oh, I'm sorry, psychosocial services to children undergoing cancer treatment at UMass Memorial Children's Medical Center in Worcester, Boston's Children Hospital, Tufts Children's Hospital, Shriners Children's Boston, Dana Farber Children's Cancer Center, Mass General Hospital for Children, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the life and quality of the life of these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsor toy distributions, Laughter Noon, Laughter is Healthy Positive Appearance Programs, Pet-Assisted Therapy, KCC Supercar Experience, and educational programs, and hospital celebrations in honor of a child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. We hereby resolve and do proclaim by unanimous vote of the Board of Selectmen and the support of the people of Douglas, recognizing the month of September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. All right. And does anybody have objection to starting the public hearing two minutes early?
I don't know if you can do that.
I actually can't.
You're gonna hit the minutes, but you can start.
All right. Yep. Let's see if Hal can make it back by seven fifty.
No rush, Hal. Listen, did these dry out?
Did they get them?
No, I had a bunch that I donated. I picked the radiest moment in the last six months to deliver them. Oops.
I'm gonna drop to a flood.
Make sure it's umbrella.
There's a chance Hal may make it back. What are the odds?
One more minute.
Anybody wanna put odds on his return before seven fifty?
I'd bet that he does.
Yeah, I do too.
Oh. It's a cheap bet. You already washed him.
Even had time to wash my hands.
Look at that. And it's seven fifty.
Following some guidelines again?
Yes.
Okay. We have a public hearing on two pole petitions for Oak Street and possible votes.
Make a motion to open the public hearing. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, do we wanna do these individually as a group?
I think we can walk and chew gum at the same time.
Yeah. All right, and we have... Come on up. So we have 269718541, which is to install pole P-550 and P-650 on the south side of Oak Street, and relocate P-8, install pole P-8-50, and relocate pole P-9, north side of Oak Street. And install P-950 in pole P-1050 on the south side of Oak Street, east of Parker Road. Is that about right?
Correct.
Yes.
And then for 26791854-2, pole P-1650 on the east side of Oak, and relocate pole P-17 on the east side of Oak Street, south of Parker Road. Relocate pole P-19 on the west side of Oak Street, south of Parker. Install P-18 on the east side of Oak, across from existing P-18. That will become P-18-89, and install an anchor with a twenty-foot lead length on pole 20.
Correct.
Is that all right with that? And is there anybody on the abutters, or anybody have any concerns regarding these two pole petitions?
Mike Swicker, 46 Oak Street. We had sent, or I had sent a letter with pitches to the selectmen. It's running this situation. If there's any questions. The three neighbors in the abutters at 46, 50, and 45 oppose what's going on with pole 20. I noticed even on my way in here this evening, on West Street, right across from GBI, National Grid did what we're requesting to have done here, where they left the one pole alone, and they put a pole across the street. And that's what we're asking here also. Back when this project was first started, obviously, we don't know about pole locations. And for this whole project, they moved entrances and everything around for the project because of line of sight. And with what's going on here, a pole change could also help with line of sight with two driveways, which, they're doing it for a major project. I don't see what the big deal is on moving this and making this all happen. If there's any questions, I'll answer anything that you guys want. And also, one of the abutters, Jesse Mazinski is here.
Yep. Forty-five.
All right, so your solution is to leave P-20 and install a new pole across the street? Distance between P-19 is two hundred and seven feet, and granting a guide cable for 21.
Yes. This was, through the chair, this was discussed earlier when they came out. And the distance of two oh seven is no different than what side of the street it's on. And I also said that I was bearing a waiver for further down the street for a guide wire on pole 21. We're trying to eliminate that guide wire on pole 20. You can see the driveway for one of the abutters when you come up in the wintertime. If you can't plow it, you ain't gonna see. It's a suicide trap. And that's one of the main deals that's going on here. We're trying to prevent that guide wire on P-20.
Should I respond?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, and we did, we did meet out there at the site, and we discussed putting a pole across the street. Ultimately, it was decided for simplicity that this was a better, better option for design. Setting the pole across the street comes with three extra, three extra guy wires and anchors, two on pole, which would become pole 20, and then one on pole 21, Mr. Swicker was just talking about. Along with that, it introduces three more angles to the line, whereas we'd like to just dead-end straight, straighten the line on pole 20. The other, you know, the other reason we'd like to keep the guy wire on pole 20 as designed instead of moving it across the street is that, as it is now, you can see the guy wire's in line with traffic. If a car's coming down this way in this lane, it's beyond the pole. It's not out in front of the pole. So, you know, it's shown here in the street. It's actually off the street a little bit, but...
So it's parallel with the road?
Parallel with the road, away from traffic.
Right.
Yeah, you fired me.
What's the distance of that pole to that wall? Any idea?
This pole to this wall? I'm gonna say probably ten feet. Mr. Swicker could probably tell you exactly.
From the pole to the wall?
To the wall.
That's right, yeah. If I can to the chair, I'll respond. The ground wire to my house and everything's right there. You got set to that wall's maybe three feet, four feet? So I know ten feet. They wanna put the guy wire out twenty feet, so you can see an idea where...
Yeah, I get all that. I follow where he wants to put the guy wire. I wanna know what the distance was from the pole to the wall. So you got about ten feet in between it.
No.
You got... How far is it?
Well, five feet, four feet, from the pole to the wall. Yes, sir.
I mean, I guess I'm basing it like, you know, the mailbox is probably four feet. You know, if you're... I'm just looking at the perspective of the photo. Could be, could be a different perspective. I'm not sure.
Does the, did you check the highway? They don't have a problem with the wire being adjacent to the street like that?
I guess this is usually the process of going to the pole position. I haven't spoken to the highway department.
Because the issue that...
I spoke to them about the trees.
That you brought up about snow and stuff in the winter time, and that's what shocked my question, that's all. Sorry.
No, that's good. Am I looking at this right?
Yeah, it's gonna come down even parallel with the street. So he's gonna come back to this point about the same distance that the pole is in, which does look like it's less than ten feet.
And the proposed solution is a pole across, directly across, and that would be tethered to this pole?
Yeah, I mean, I...
Well, you said a guy wire, and pole 20 is gonna be there anyway, so...
Well, this would be, the pole across the street would become pole 20, and this would become probably pole 20-1 or something like that. But there would be, so if we, so this is the proposed solution. What we had discussed was if we put a wire across the street, bring all of the primary conductor across the street, and jog it back, that pole across the street, the new pole would have two guy wires on it. And then pole 21, which is this pole, would have one guy wire on it, away from the road. We haven't designed that because this was our preferred design, so, you know, I looked into it a little bit. We haven't actually gone and done a design for that, the discussion that I'm thinking ahead.
So do you have a real objection to what Mr. Swicker is proposing, or is it just, do you, planning is behind?
The objection would be that this is the simpler design, and we believe this is the better, the better design. Looks less, less complicated. Introduces less tangles into our, our pole line.
Does the, is there any detriment to the level of service or ease of repair in the proposed solution by Mr. Swicker?
No, other than there would be another pole right across the street, you know, as far as width of the road goes. His service would be fed from that new service. Or that new pole.
Who owns the property across the street, and are they in support of this proposal?
Yep. I think it'd be safer for old parties. It's a safety hazard in the driveway.
If I may, through the chair?
Yep.
And in the scheme of this project, as we all know, most of the projects are federally backed and everything. That's why they're doing them all. This little change is microscopic in the realm of everything that's gonna be going there. And as I stated in the letter, and we all signed it, the three neighbors. When they're long gone, we're still gonna be there. So we have to live with the decisions made, and I know it's an annisment, and as I stated, I realize that. But it's just something, just something, thanks.
Just for the record, one of the signers is the property owner?
Pardon me?
For that project?
Yes.
Yeah. So you don't have a strong objection. You have the preferred solution, but you were doing to the other suggested solution as well?
I, we haven't designed it, so I can't, I can't say that we won't come into more, more issues going down that path. But it would kinda be a start over here for, for this area.
Is there any rush to get something done by a certain date, or...
I, I'm here on behalf of National Grid. My company's power engineers, so I don't represent Blue Wave Solar at all, so I can't say, I can't speak for them.
Try to accommodate the neighbors. No issue with trees across the street, putting anything forward?
I'm not sure. I think, I think there might be some tree trimming needed. And then I think there was this, the stone wall would need to be relocated.
So then you gotta go back to planning board?
I think that would be on Blue Wave to go back for the stone wall, but I'm not, not positive.
Because it's part of the scenic route, so then you back into the stone walls and wood openings and all that sort of stuff.
Hal, I'm with you. I'm inclined to...
See a redesign?
See a redesign. It's, I know it's an annisment, but it is...
I didn't cover that.
Well, this is based off the plan that they submitted. Yeah. If you're gonna revise it, that's not, the plan hasn't been submitted yet. You'd ask them to go back to the drawing board? Yeah, you can't use that, but it's not a blanket approval to do whatever you want to throw. Might have a member of the planning board yet, so I guess you can answer that question.
Yeah, it sounds like it's written relatively vaguely with the permit itself. Like the scope that's actually included, the scope of work includes upgrading the current single-phase overhead conductors to three-phase spacer cable construction. And replacing or relocating twenty-four poles. Wouldn't that fall under the existing permit?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it appears that way. In my opinion, yes. But, to Mr. Fitzpatrick's point, it could be perceived the other way as well, so...
Well, how do you approve a plan that hasn't been before? We should see a revised plan, come back with a revised plan.
A revised plan, whatever. I think that the planning board is gonna put their eyes on it.
There's no super urgency to take action on that one.
Well, we have a, so the ask of us to National Grid is to amend that plan?
Yeah. Like in, in the direction to... Do you have any, anything, Mr. Swicker, that they can use to go back and come up with a formulation that works for you and the other abutters?
If I may, through the chair, and he attest, the three of us neighbors, all three of us were outside that afternoon discussing it, looking at it. And it was like he just said before, you know, possibilities of one way or the other. So what they've done is just, as he stated, the easiest way. But with the curve of the road there, the actual angle of the wires, it isn't gonna affect it, you know? And where the poses are changing, you can see it's just a big old dead tree now laying across there on the property and stuff like that. So it has been discussed, and that's why I said I have no problem granting an annisment on pole 21. They wanna put a guy wire in to hold it back on my property. I said, I got no problem with that. It's the pole 20 of that real congested, tight little area. Sure, it's great right now, but as we all know, winter comes, and now it becomes a problem. Especially for John next door. He works for EverSource. That's why he's not here. He's tied up with the rain and the storms. The, in wintertime, you come out that driveway, if you can't plow that corner up, you're blind when you're coming out. Totally blind.
How much is this set back your current project that's underway by going back to the drawing board, going back in front of planning?
Yeah, I mean, it'll, I'm guessing a few months between just redesign, going back to, I'm assuming Blue Wave is gonna have to get another, from in there, scenic road permit for the wall, moving the wall. You know, if I could just address the, you know, just talking about the busyness of this pole here, you know, the other pole would be going right across the street from John's driveway. So, you know, it kinda adds more congestion is why, why we felt that just having one, one anchor on pole 20 was the way to go versus introducing another pole, two more anchors across the street.
Do you envision, I think you said you were gonna make it kind of a diagonal shot. This pole has to stay if we go across the street?
This pole has to stay because Mr. Swicker's service is on it, because it is an underground service, yes.
If I may, through the chair, they just did this, if you go by GBI, you can see where their power is on one pole on the GBI side. So they left that pole alone, and they put a new pole across the street for the wires coming out of the other project. It's no different than this. It's the exact same thing as what they're doing. So they've already been doing it.
It is, but Main Street's a lot wider, wider than, wider than Oak Street here. So, you know, I'm not sure what the, what the right of way is, the public right of way width is here, but it's definitely probably half of what, what Main Street is, I'm guessing.
All right. Any thoughts, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I add a piece just on that for the planning board? I, I believe I heard, yeah, I can say that if they did have to put a pole across the street, it may affect the stone wall?
Yes.
And if it does affect the stone wall, the planning board didn't render any conditions based on stone wall. So I think with the trees in the clearing might be wrapped under the kind of blanket approval they gave them. But if it does affect the stone wall, they didn't talk about that, so I think they need another hearing, but...
Thank you for clearing that up.
Michael Fraser, National Grid.
Joe.
I haven't been to the site, so I haven't seen it, but have you looked at a, can you do a push brace on it?
No, because the, so the...
The driveway?
Yeah, the driveway is right here. So the primary is coming this way. So a push brace would go into the driveway.
See a redesign?
I agree with you, Hal. I think we do these pole petitions, and they're often not a big deal. But this does impact the residents that would be subjected to it, and I think it warrants our concern.
So, I don't disagree with that. So, I don't disagree with that. Could I ask one question?
Sure.
Or actually request on it? Uh, it's based off of whatever the redesign is. See if you can do a walkthrough with the highway super?
Sure.
And see what the impact would be on stone removal?
Okay.
So we could table this one?
Yeah.
Is it, is it pole, what's the pole number that we're, 20? And who would we table the, the, any, any action on pole 20 until that, and how would you, would you be, have it spacked, goes the next, how long does it take to?
Um, I'm not, when's the next planning board meeting? Or, I'm sorry, sorry, selectmen's meeting?
So 20?
20.
Yeah, it would be before then, I'm guessing probably within a month or so.
Could you have it for like first Tuesday about 10:00?
That would be a month from today, right? Yeah, we can, we can try and do that.
Mr. Chairman, the only problem, the only challenge you're going to have is the, you're going to need whatever opinion out of the planning board before you can render a decision on that pole. So, the negative side of this whole thing is this project's get, keeps getting pushed out further and further and further. Because the applicant, Blue Wave can't do their work if they can't have holes. You send it back to the planning board and, and when they had the poles, the first time they came around, the objective was to clear up all this stuff and here we are, not beginning, you know, wanting to move the pole across the street and we've got to go back to planning board because of the, because of the wall, so I'm just pointing that out, I'm not, how you're going one way or the other. But at some point, we need to move forward with the development of that, that was said.
So we have a motion from Hal...
To table.
To table this.
Second.
Yeah, a motion that has been made and seconded. Uh, is there any further discussion regarding this?
No, just can we have an update on our next meeting, just so we can try to help move this along, hopefully Blue Wave can get either...
When is the next planning board meeting?
I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, the next meeting is Thursday. I do have a agenda item for under miscellaneous, so I can ask the board directly how they feel about if alterations to the stone wall would affect their decision that's already rendered, and I'll get an opinion back to the selectmen on that.
That would be helpful, that way we can keep that project moving forward, so it's not delaying it too long.
Is there a way that we could get a representative from Grid at that next meeting to actually make the request, uh?
It wouldn't be Grid, it would be Blue Wave.
Or Blue Wave?
I'll speak to them.
And see if you can get them at the next meeting, if we can get them to amend the scenic road permit. All right. Any other discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Um, so what's the process, I'm sorry, uh, just come back to the next meeting? Or do we need to?
Do the redesign based off of the proposal, but you want to probably reach out to Blue Wave after Thursday?
Okay.
To see if they got the amendment to the seating program.
Okay. Excuse me.
Will they even be at that meeting?
Yeah. So next is to open the special town meeting, special town meeting warrant and review timeline and possible votes. Looks like we have checklist. Would anyone make a motion to open the STM warrant?
Don't mind.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, looks like all of our checklist items are under on here, you want me to just run down through the checklist or it's pretty much standard old hat process?
There was one check missing.
There was one check missing.
Yeah. On the September, the first one.
Nailed it. Special town meeting November 16th, 22.
Your efficiency.
Nice.
I don't want anyone to say, Mr. Chairman, Matt...
Yes, sir.
I don't want anyone to say that they weren't forewarned. This is an important special town meeting. There'll be a number of articles, um, on this warrant that, you know, you might typically load up into a really lengthy annual town meeting. We prefer to break these things up, give ourselves more time to refine our proposals and not delay the progress of the town. So there are going to be some compensation reform and other issues that have been reserved for the fall town meetings so they get the attention they deserve from, from voters. So just a little heads up there, this is not a house cleaning routine 10-minute meeting. It, it can and should be longer than that, it's a substantive meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Matt. All right, so we have the Highway Department on-call policy first read.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The Highway Superintendent is requesting this policy be put in place. The notion is to spread out this on-call response to more than just the superintendent and their working foreman and have both the opportunity for overtime as well as the opportunity to not be on-call for a particular period of time. This is a cost item because it would, it involves a minimum amount of time once you've been called back. But it spreads the duty out amongst several employees. It is voluntary on-call process. So that is why this has come forward. The, uh, I think we have to acknowledge the fact always and forever that we have a small staff in town and that lots of people wear flammable hats. And, uh, when you consider that, the Highway Super and working foreman are also call firefighters and respond out of the home quite frequently. For those calls, um, this is a work-life balance issue as much as it is a cost item for the town. These calls are not that frequent, but they are frequent enough to, to more break them up, different ways to go to.
And has Labor Council gone through all this and made sure that they're kosher and happy with it?
I haven't engaged the Labor Council on it. This is more about, this is a process. Who's going to have the phone, when are they going to respond? Doesn't really look much beyond that. Our standard arrangement with, uh, people who work outside is under the Fair Labor Standards Act, they're not exempt and they work a 40-hour week, anyhow, over 40 is all the time.
Pretty straightforward. Anybody have any questions on our all?
It sounds naive of me, but are all Highway Department folks technically on-call?
No.
So this would add a level of responsibility that already asked of them?
Yeah, so that's why they're, I think it's in the second. This is for that special call, so they are on-call 24/7, right? So it's a snowstorm weekend, that's not the issue. This is what, who answers the phone when there's a call for service? Let's say you have a tree falls down across the street in the middle of the night, the entire department doesn't come out with a chainsaw, it's usually an on-call person will come, cut up the tree, push it off with the, with the loader, and that issue is resolved. So it's who is that person going to be? The voluntary nature of it, just for your references, at the top of page two, employees, employees as discussed in this policy refers to any full-time employee of the town, belongs to Highway Department who has chosen to participate in the on-call.
So they have the option to opt out?
Correct.
Is it all or nothing? Meeting, I'll be on-call the first two weeks of the month, but if I cancel, whatever reason, do all four weeks?
I think their anticipation is to establish a rotation. So that's item D on page three. So there'll be a payroll week, the on-call scheduling will be set by the foreman and or the superintendent with input from the employees who have chosen to be part. So I think it's more or less going to, you know, here's the next four or five weeks of on-call responsibility coincides with payroll week, who's got what week? So I think you could, if you wanted to take two weeks of on-call, because nobody else wanted it, you can take two weeks alone.
And if you wanted to get off, all you have to do is screw up and that's on, be boring you, and you'll get punished for six-month suspension.
By not getting called at 10:00?
While you're, while you're in Florida.
Yeah, no, I think it's...
Well, it's true, doesn't do any good to call people in and screw it up.
Yeah, but if you wanted to sum her up, you'd get in trouble at the first of the year, that's all.
Well, you just not participate at all, it'd be a big deal for your reputation.
First reading, that's good?
Everybody's good with it?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to revise the on-call scheduling because it's really Wednesday or Thursday at 12:01 a.m. to Wednesday at 11:59 and 12:00. So if you're okay, I'm just going to just change that wording so it matches what we currently have.
Okay. And that'll be reflected by our second reading.
You got that?
I got that.
Excellent.
Sure you had it.
All right. So we're on to call firefighter pay reform proposal.
Mr. Chairman, I believe I briefed the board in fairly detailed fashion, uh, at your last meeting, which was three weeks ago, not two. I think it's more than two weeks ago, it's a distant memory. Nothing has changed. The text here now is, is regu, ready for public consumption and review. Uh, my request this evening, Mr. Chairman, is that the board refer this to the personnel board for further inquiry and the recommendation for town meeting November. The idea is to get all of the concrete form work done and approved by town meeting in November so that the budget for fiscal '24 could reflect changes. So they won't be fiscal '23 changes, it'll be fiscal '24 changes. But there's a fair amount of substance to all of it, so I'd like it all to be on the full-time meeting. Are there any questions about this structure at this point? So I have met with the leadership of the Friday Department, I've also met with the union leadership for the full-time employees, and so far there has been no objection. On September 14th, I will be meeting with call staff, they have a training that night, I'll be talking to them, briefing them on this proposal before that. Because I would like to have a united consensus, uh, going to the personnel board, going to town meeting.
Are these the proposed wages?
So the proposed would be on the last two pages, so I did not put page numbers on. So this side-by-side is the current system. The proposed wages are on the bottom, running over to the top of the last page. Those are hourly rates.
So this is what they are now, one of the bigger...
Correct. And I did bring this to union staff, Mr. Chairman, because there is one adjustment that we would have to do to their pay scale through an MLU to their existing contract. So I wanted to make sure that that was possible before we moved on too fast as a rest.
I'm in support of the proposal.
So as I said, my request is that you refer to the personnel board.
Would you care to add commentary in a motion?
So the only wage has that changed with the firefighter call and the probationary firefighter?
No.
Oh, this is a comparison.
So you're probably, the biggest change would be the lieutenants on the call side? Going up from, I think they're getting 1771 now, they would go up to, I hate being blind,
2035?
2535.
You said that was an increase for the call?
Call lieutenants, yep. That's the biggest change. Next biggest change would be that in order to build in the lower levels of call, lower levels being, you know, the least amount of training and experience, you need to bump up your full-time, who have the training and experience, but have the same title. So they go up from $17 to, uh, these are all step one, we don't have anybody add step one right now, they go from 17 to 2132. So from 1771 to 2132 is just about $3.66.
I would make a motion that we refer Matt's plan to the personnel board for their review and recommendation.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Agenda number eight. We have ARPA discussions, three different areas. So discussion of possible votes. First bullet item, uh, we have is for the use of ARPA funds to secure a bus for the senior center or the adult social center. Impossible votes. Nothing has changed since the last time we discussed this in open session. The only thing that I do have this change, and I can pass these around to a board of selectmen, is I have received multiple letters with requests and support of the purchase of the senior center bus, because it is proving to be an immediate need with people from needing transportation to get to and from doctor's appointments, um, needing transportation to get to and from the social center itself. We have one senior citizen that is unable to, she's no longer able to drive, but has a job over at Walmart and has no means to get to and from her job. She's a resident over at Hillwood Landing. So if you'd like, you guys are welcome to peruse through the letters on it and see what your thoughts and theories are. I do know that we have a commitment from Ryan Fatman, that pending appropriation from the state based off of their budget situation next year, uh, if he is able to, is willing to donate $54,000 to procure a bus, uh, for the use of the adult social center. My thought process is, is, well, that's nice, it may or may not happen based off of what our financial situation looks like in the Commonwealth, and we have the opportunity to provide to these seniors a service that quite obviously they have a need for and a use for.
Any particular reason why the trees didn't come in and present this, request it?
None that I can think of.
Okay, so the reason why I asked that is, we had, I inquired a little bit, got a little bit of information, knowing probably about 1% of what we actually need, but back in 2010, you know, the joint relationship with the town of Sutton-Sutton, the host community, with the, uh, bus that they had gotten at that time, and I think went through it in 2012 and they met some challenges, and I don't know what those challenges are, of why it's not here today, I would like to know that. Along with what the impact is and how we're going to, is it going to be a... Why do you think all these, uh, social, uh, for staffing, or is it... is it another department that's gonna provide that service that would be used?
It would be the addition of one staff member to the adult social center. There would be the recurring cost of insurance.
Maintenance?
And maintenance or whatever it is on the bus, but the intent from the social center is to also charge a fee, which would offset the cost of maintenance and insurance.
First of all, just so you understand, I'm not opposed to the bus, but what I'm concerned about is having all these things answered. Sure that we go into what our rights, well, I don't know what happened that first time around, and that would, that's good information to have, if it's a, something that we're unsure. Do we lease a bus for a year and get the project going to see if it even works? Is, yeah, you'll waste money on a lease for a year, but at the same time you'll prove it out and make sure that it works.
Well, I'm not one, and I understand your concerns on it. I'm not one to speak for Patrice, but I would assume, knowing her as I do, and how resourceful she usually is, if there was an opportunity to share transportation between us and Sutton, we'd be doing it. I know that the current service that we are allowed in Douglas is elder bus, and elder bus doesn't have the scheduling or the routes that bring these people to where they're trying to get to from, which is where the need for us having our own was there. We used to have a bus, and for some reason we abandoned having it.
So again, I would like to see Patrice come and explain to us what happened that first time around, just so we can make a good decision.
I think the concept is good by Mr. Chris Patrick, the devil's in the details, trying to see what we're getting into and to make sure it's operating. You get two people wanting the bus at the same time, how is all that gonna be?
There's a potential for a shavings. Not a bad idea, it's just to make sure that we're looking at it as a whole, that's all.
Is there a deadline of when we have to commit the ARPA funds for the?
December twenty twenty-four.
Twenty-four, okay.
It's a long way off.
Yeah.
I will tell you that at a recent lunch gathering of administrators and managers from around Mr. County, probably fourteen of us together, many boards are still struggling with the prioritization and the spending of ARPA funds. I think the fear is universal. You don't want to have to pay the feds back. So it's pushing people towards doing more smaller projects because they feel like, well, if a couple are disallowed, we can always recover from that. But if we bury a four million dollar pipe in the ground and the feds decide they don't want to pay for that, how does the town possibly pay that back? It's a terrible shame that they've created this program after making us all so risk averse, that we can't utilize it the way they intended. But I feel comfortable representing Patrice on one point where she has been in my office and asked for a solution to the general problem. We want people to be healthier, so we want people to seek the preventive care that they need. To the extent that the elder bus doesn't run to Milford where a lot of seniors in Douglas get their care, they're not, they're not able to go, not able to keep their money. So that is in the, one of the markers that we can put on the map for why this has come up. I don't know the history, I mean, 2012 is five years before I started here. I am now determined to find this paper.
It's under my chair.
It's under my chair. And the, gonna have to figure, the, my guess is, knowing what I do about the budget history of the town, and the constraints, and the asset may have been getting to the end of its useful life, our share of the expenses may have been pretty substantial.
Well, it ran for two years and Sutton was the host community. So that's why it's missing information. I'm just curious what it was.
I think they made it very easy for us to cut it because you're right, they were half the, half the equation. There was also a different director at the time that may not have been. Be careful.
Well, no, but I'll say it for you, so you don't have to say it. I think there was, there's a difference of opinion between the former director and the current director over the wisdom of giving up the service. It was definitely a proactive step taken by the then, the then senior director in Douglas, not to sign this back up.
You had commentary, Chief?
Is that fair?
Yeah, I think so. I think it was easy. She may have made it easier for us to cut it.
You're on council on aging, right?
Yeah. That was low-hanging fruit when the town started hitting financial times. It was the first thing, one of the first things that was cut back in that time.
Is there any particular reason why we wouldn't make this part of their budget from first using ARPA funds? It's gonna become a budget line item anyway, talking about the purchase of vehicles or the whole of that.
Right. So all the operating expenses would become part of their operating budget, and I'm not of the view that that would be too difficult and not to swallow. The capital outweigh, however, I'm not sure would make the process through the capital.
She's had on capital before, and it didn't score.
Yeah. Well, the thing is, it has to score really high even to get funded, right? We know how many projects we have. We ended up with a list of twenty-some odd projects we're only able to fund three or four a year.
Well, up into our latest thought process on the capital, you get big ticket items, the fire truck took fifty-seven percent of the budget, the chapter ninety funds took thirty-two percent of the budget. Doesn't leave much luck. We got a couple of kettles and whatnot for the school. I would love that. So, I don't know. Just, you have a lot of, a lot of things that Bob Sullivan came, he came with that could potentially help get them, but they're all big paid items, I think, five million, all the way down to two hundred thousand, depending on what it is that you want to do. So these are all considerations for it. That's why I'm asking, why, not disputing that there's a need, I would like to see justified a little better, but why wouldn't it become a part of their capital outbreak budget?
I would also just say that why not take the lead if the interest is here, but I know there's regionalization. Everyone likes to regionalize. Instead of taking Sutton's lead back in 2010, like when we get, maybe get some of those direct costs.
Well, does any of the other surrounding towns have one? Like, which have one of those?
Yeah.
Have we reached out to them to see if they?
Oxford uses elder bus.
But if they use elder bus, elder bus doesn't go to Milford.
Correct.
So our surface could be Milford heavy, and Oxford residents could pay to defer the cost.
Seems like we need a little more thought to address.
There's a little month on it, I think, if the town administration worked with Patrice, you could come up with a better, or a complete plan.
Well, fill in some of the details that we've been asking about.
Yeah. But I mean, to keep, I mean, you keep going back to the, to the capital expense. It will never score on capital. We all know it'll never score on capital.
I know. You said it in every meeting.
It doesn't matter what meetings I'm sitting at. It's been on capital before it gets passed over. I have a need for an elder bus, or I have a need for a new police cruiser. Police cruiser's gonna take it. I have a need for a new elder bus, or I need to put new windows in the municipal center. The municipal center's gonna take it. It will never score high. So you can get all the, like, snarkiness out of it now, because I'm just being straight. It's a, it's a straightforward proposal.
Yeah.
There's not a whole lot of information that you need to decide on. There's a service that's needed for the elder community in town, so we can ask Patrice to come back in and represent exactly what's in front of us, and that's fine. But there's no other real data that's needed.
See, I can read what's in front of me. Okay. What I'm asking about is the information as to why, what challenges did they have back in 2010? I don't think that's a tough question. I don't think it's out of line to ask that question. We do have a responsibility to ask questions if we have concerns.
Well, I wholeheartedly agree, but I don't understand what a 2010 hardship has to do with a 2022 request.
I guess once, once the answer comes up, we'll be able to answer that question.
Perfectly fine. So we will kick the can down the road on the adult social center bus until the next meeting. The next bullet item is the fire department cruisers and possible votes. And I do have Chief Manning and Chief Vincent here to review the purpose behind the ask. Is currently we have two chiefs, they're both on call situations, one's running an aged vehicle, the other is running a personally-owned vehicle. Basically, they have a need to either replace one cruiser and hand down the second one, or replace both cruisers, so they are both adequately equipped and able to be able to do their job after hours with the proper lighting, sirens, space, and equipment required to do their jobs. That's the summation. I believe Assistant Chief Manning put together a presentation that should be in our packets. Would you guys like to come up and discuss that? Thank you for coming, Chiefs.
Thank you. I know we touched on this the last time we were here, and we had all the ARPA proposals. I guess I want, I want you folks to ask us questions so that we can answer the questions more or less. Just, it's not, I know that you guys don't do our type of job every day, so just want to know what your thoughts are. Basically, the command vehicle is driven by a chief or a senior officer to the scene of an emergency. The purpose is to get ahead of fire apparatus or an ambulance and begin an assessment so that you can deploy your resources correctly. I think everybody knows that seconds count. You don't have a siren, if you don't have lighting, you're not going anywhere very fast. And we want to be there to protect the citizens of the town promptly. Contains all types of lighting, I should say lifesaving equipment, medical stuff, lifesaving medications. We carry knock-in, we carry EpiPens for asthma and anaphylactic reactions. We carry a defibrillator in our cruisers. We also have fire extinguishers and an SCBA or self-contained breathing apparatus. And also in it, we have a communication center, an equipment that has a repeater that makes it so that you can get your, it repeats off the tower your message, so that it can be reached. It also has a hotspot and accountability board, which is a board where you track your firefighters when they're in a building. So you know where everyone is, if someone's on the second floor, if someone's exterior, if someone's a rabbin intervention team. So very important during rescues. SCBA, if you get here before someone, you can make a rescue if you have, if you have a SCBA with you. My department vehicle right now is nine years old, starting to show some wear. And quite honestly, our needs since 2014 completely changed. The fire systems have completely changed. We're a department that's very big on dive rescue. We've go mutually, we've had some drownings in town, we've actually recovered people. And it requires pulling of a trailer, it requires pulling of, we've got two boats, one's a rescue boat, that you can deploy from a boat ramp. So you need a vehicle that has power to get the boat, pull the boat back up and back it in. We also have one.
What do you use now for that?
Right now, we've been using the brush truck or personal vehicles. Now, brush truck, unfortunately, if you have an incident where now you're, that's at a dive call, and it might be some uptown, now it's not here for, there for a brush fire.
We also have a dive trailer and tube dive boats, and often if we had a dive or water rescue incident, we would require all those resources at the scene of that one incident. And only having one department vehicle that is able to tow that makes us have to rely on personally-owned vehicles that may or may not have any warning devices, meaning lights and sirens, to get those vehicles and personnel to the scene of that incident. And the brush truck also has only two riding positions, so we can't load it up with any other equipment or personnel at this time because it's got the skid unit for the, for brush fires in the back of it. So there's a limitation there where we may be responsible in traffic because we don't have other means to pull it.
And so if you go on a dive call, you've got the trailer pulling all the equipment, plus you've got the boats. So now that means you have two vehicles tied up trying to get to a dive call. The other thing is, the equipment we carry, the vehicle that I have is a good vehicle, but it's just, it's getting older, and honestly, it's not big enough. We're looking, hopefully, to go with a larger size SUV instead of the Explorer. It's just really limited as far as space with the, all the type of equipment that you, that you carry. Keller's on the hazmat team for the state as well, so she deploys some of that. She could all her dive gear in her personal vehicle as well. What else do you have?
Just in terms of the space with the vehicle, we would also be able to use these command vehicles to tow, and because they have the ability to tow greater weights, our boat alone is about thirty-five hundred pounds, the Ford Explorer. We wouldn't really be able to tow the boat with it, because I believe it, it's at the max end of what that vehicle is able to tow. When I looked it up online, his vehicle, which hasn't really been set up to tow, I think the max it can tow is somewhere between two and five thousand pounds, depending on the size of the motor and the type of, it has to have a heavy-duty hitch installed, which, again, I'm not an auto mechanic, but I don't believe he has that heavy-duty hitch installed that would allow us to tow five thousand pounds. So we wouldn't even be able to tow most of our assets with that smaller-sized SUV, as well as just the space. In the photos in your handout, you can see how crunched he is for trying to access equipment, particularly medical equipment, even to be able to deploy that quickly on a call. So really, like you said, at the end of the day, the seconds count. The way our gear is set up in these vehicles is very important in terms of getting out to an emergency right away. And ultimately, at the end of the day, we want to be there to save your life or your property. Like you said, we carry lifesaving medications. We can get there ahead of the ambulance, say the first ambulance is out of town, or even before the first ambulance, and get something to you quickly to take care of your problem. So.
The other thing we want is we want repeaters in both vehicles. One thing we don't have in my cruiser right now is a cache of radios. We have, I charge my radio at home on my charger inside. My house will one in the, in the station. But we should really have a cache of radios. Radios batteries fail and things like that. We know we have that stuff coming with the radio project. But to have a bank of radios so that if you have problems during a, during an incident, you can just reach in and grab another radio. The other thing about a command vehicle is when you have, when you have a fire, you set that command vehicle up as a, as a, as a command station or command post, so that you have, you can spread out maps if you're doing a search, if you can, you got, you're tracking personnel. We have GPS units, air monitoring systems, you know, gas meters and things like that. We have the building, and now we have the 120 Gilboa that has a lot of carbon dioxide in it. We've got meters for that. So again, our, our technology and needs for the fire department are certainly changing, quite honestly. And I mean this with all sincerity. If we didn't need it, we wouldn't be asking for it, quite honestly.
Also, if I can just add, his vehicle's approaching nine years old. We have been having to hire staff that need to attend the fire academy. They're coming into dorm with, with no training. So we have been spending close to five thousand dollars in this last fiscal year to reimburse people for mileage, and that includes my mileage on my personal vehicle. So we would be looking to downgrade his vehicle and use it as a support vehicle to get people to the fire academy, as well as something to carry people to incidents. For example, for the members that aren't signed off to drive apparatus, they would have a vehicle with seating, unlike our current brush truck that only has two seating positions to get to the scene of an emergency. And because his vehicle also has that command center in the back, we would be able to assign the member that does accountability to that, bring that car and start doing personal accountability at a fire or other large emergency. And that's really important for our safety on the fire ground as well. So we would like to see that nine-year-old vehicle downgraded to more of a support position, and then have two vehicles that are capable of emergency response, holding all of our equipment, as well as towing any of our larger trailers.
And I guess I had one other thought. I might have escaped. That was that right now, if the inspector goes out during the day, a lot of times they're in a brush truck or they're in the ambulance doing inspections all over around town doing inspections. So again, downgrading that other vehicle to something that could use the inspector. I know we're good. We've got big projects that are coming up that we're going to be doing a lot of inspections at. So we just, right now, we have no redundancy with vehicles and we want to try to do that and try to professionalize and move forward.
The reason for the second command vehicle is the backup in case one is.
Sometimes if I'm out of town or I'm on a day off.
This would be your main, you would be, this would be your, your vehicle.
Right, but she would have the other one, and then the other one would.
So it'd double both as your normal vehicle and the command vehicle has that capability.
And you always, and you always have a paramedic on those vehicles.
And also because I'm on the dive team, I would be responsible for bringing a lot of that dive equipment to the scene of an emergency, which I have done in my personally owned vehicle this past May or June. Menden had a dive rescue. I don't know if you recall the incident at the Alacante Restaurant. I actually responded mutual aid and I was the incident commander for the dive operation. And then one of my members had to use his privately owned vehicle to tow our dive trailer there. So.
Any particular reason why we don't use Adam's truck for that since it was purchased as the multi-department vehicle? Also painted red so it would work with the fire department? For towing the boat, so trailers or whatever? Anybody? Any response to?
I, we don't actually have use of that vehicle, to be quite honest with you. We, we aren't sure how that would be delineated between the two departments. And it is my understanding that Adam takes that vehicle home and it's basically assigned to him for the other duties he has to do with the town. So that's, I think, the best answer that I got from you. I didn't have a full understanding of how the two departments were supposed to share the vehicle unless you have any other thoughts on that, but we don't have keys to it or any other.
But if he's a call firefighter and the duly used truck, then he could be deployed to bring said trailer to, if you ask me correctly.
If he is available to do so, which is not always the case. He's an on-call employee and they can respond at will when they want to respond. There's not a specific on-call requirement with that. One thing that's very particular with these vehicles is it's set up with all of our own personal equipment and gear. So sharing a vehicle that is designed for emergency response with my turnout gear and the items that I need to respond to emergency, to transfer that between a vehicle or have a day use of a vehicle would be rather impractical. And that's another reason that I think that we don't share that vehicle. And it's a reason that when the fire chief goes out of town for just one day, for him to take all of his personal equipment out of there and for me to put mine in would be rather cumbersome, especially because we don't have a place to store it in the fire station.
So it's fitted to you, in other words.
Correct. And I have all.
That saves somebody in the, behind Alacante.
I can't speak for fire services, I can speak for military service. And you have a vehicle, military service, muscle memory, everything. Your gun goes where it goes, your bag goes where it goes.
Yeah, and if this were to take place, we'd want them to be identical, quite honestly. Just for muscle memory.
I have a lot of specific parts and pieces and I listed them in the handouts. And I, like you said, I know exactly where those are. So 2:00 in the morning, I know my gloves are here, my masks are here, the AED is here, my SCBA is positioned here. This is how I'm going to deploy it and put it on. And I've checked all that equipment in that configuration to make sure it's quickly deployable in an emergency.
So just to put things in perspective a little bit more, we're more than just Douglas. We're not, we're more than just Douglas because when it comes to mutual aid, we just had a real dry spell. District 7C went to Marlborough and fought a fire for a couple of days. It's a thing, we have a task force, we have strike teams with the district. We also have task forces with the state. I happen to be the leader of 7C, which is an ambulance task force, also a structural task force. So I could be out of town at a fire somewhere in Springfield and you have a big event going on. And we want some redundancy here so we can still handle both those calls. And it's basically given back to this, you know, to the other towns when they come and help us, you know? So we're not, we're not doing anything or asking for anything more than any other professional that fire department in 2022 does, quite honestly.
We've also had incidents in town where we've had to respond to multiple calls and we have multiple people, incident commanders in different parts of town, particularly during storms. So it's another consideration to have redundancy.
Has this been on, does the capital committee?
Was pulled off capital, talking to the town administrator. Who's putting it in the budget was in and I think got pulled out to do some shortfalls. I think we had some shortfalls if I remember correctly.
So the department heads, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The department heads' requested budget, as you recall, was about $560,000 in the rent. That was what every single department had asked for in their operating budget. So way to get that back to zero. So a lot of things fell out. And then the building commissioner's truck was moved from an operating budget item into capital. So we'll see if we can catch on.
Anticipation of the appearance.
Right. The, the overall strategy is to make sure that all vehicles of the town purchases are useful in the event of an emergency response because that's all the resources we have. So in the case of the building commissioner, he got a very light duty, it's four-wheel drive, but it's a light duty, it's a Ranger, one of the smallest pickups out there. But it has a tow package on it and will have an amber light, amber light, light. Because there is the possibility that he would have pulled a generator or seen lights or something somewhere if we were in such an extreme condition that we had to localize the asset for that. In Adam's case, my expectation of a call captain is that he's going to come to a lot of calls. That's the expectation. That he is on 24/7 call in his other responsibilities in the town is why he's allowed to take his vehicle. So if the power goes out at town hall in the middle of the night, the expectation is that Adam will come. And it's only appropriate, in my mind, if you have a truck that you want to have, we bought a plow for it, so plow in the front, it's a tow package in the back. Storage, it was supposed to be fired, put, put on there. That's useful too and specific to him. So when he responds as a call captain, he's also a town employee. He's running proper lights and he'll get to where he was going. Whether he did not, he should be deployed to a specific incident is going to have a lot of moving parts to that. Is he in town? Is he to get to the asset and get the asset to the scene on the timeframe that is required by the response? So those are considerations that occur specifically.
Which all make sense, but it was a fair question to ask since it was presented that way at town meeting.
But as far as I'm concerned, as a call captain, he is to respond to as many calls as he can because he's a part of the leadership. And that was the reason why. It was understood, he wears a lot of hats, his truck wears a lot of hats.
When we first started talking, there was fire department requests. There's limited monies, does this request trump those?
I wouldn't say it trumps it, but it would, quite honestly, well, it may because it just, right now with the current situation, it's like tying one hand. I've got to get too much done, not enough redundancy and enough equipment. I would definitely say the other stuff should come as well. Again, we have those type of situations are the ones as well, talking about trading with the police and whatnot.
This is emergency response. This is us getting to the scene of an emergency to mitigate a problem that's going on. So I would argue that this is very important. The issues going on with our building are also very important, but they're in a different category. So to compare one or the other, I don't think that's necessarily fair, but from a financial perspective, I understand where you're coming from.
No, that's strictly what we're looking at, President Kestrel, gentlemen.
And I would have to be, I would have to review that list, but I know some of the items that you were addressing with some other avenues as well.
In my understanding, there was a problem trying to locate vehicles. Made a couple of calls today. I know there's two different types of vehicles that are larger size. Some are 22s that are available on the lot. And to me, I'd rather get things squared away before the winter comes where you have that stuff rather than wait for a 23 and, you know, yeah, it's on order, but it won't be until March. That's just my thinking out loud as far as, I, I think the need is there more than, it'd be worth it for me to get a 22 than it would be more to wait another six months for a 23 if it was, if there was something that was going on.
What did you force Richard do then?
I got off the phone with the gentleman today, the chassis, it's not with them yet. They're waiting on the, they're waiting on the, the tank and the pump, the skid unit is what I was trying to say, the skid unit. They, they're thinking hopefully sometime December, November, December, they might receive it and start building.
And what do you got to do with the old forestry truck?
The old forestry truck? We're going to pull the skid unit off it and that will be a pickup.
For what use?
To transport hose and dirty items that we can't put in any other vehicle. And as a utility vehicle, we would also be maybe looking to put a plow on it so we could take care of our own lot because no removal has been a challenge at times. And I know that it's hard to get staff, even private contractors over there. So it would be a discussion on how we would use that and we'd use it to tow trailers and then that sort of thing as another, to fulfill that need. Because right now, we use personally owned vehicles to bring fire hose and other items back from fires that can't go inside of a vehicle. And at that point, the current car one would probably be at the end of its useful life and have to move along. And brush one is a 2007 Ford F-350. It's got about 16,000 miles on it. I think it has more life left in it than the current car one. So one of those two vehicles would probably be transitioned out. And my guess it would be the 2014 Ford Explorer.
So then you're back to you don't have a, a community vehicle back and forth to the academy, you're just like, you had six for you, but take that one.
It's possible.
But not if you're fit, you know?
It's possible, but that's a discussion for down the road to see what condition the vehicles are in and as well as what space we have in our building, so.
Matt, you, you know, we have the three items that are up here under ARPA, are those ones you recommended? Why do we, why are those items here as opposed to any others?
Well, tonight was your first hearing on the senior bus.
Yeah.
Right, so it was the.
Do we have a list of, a bigger list?
A lengthy list that was.
Yeah, these are just kind of considerations for the ARPA fund that I, I would sell.
So the main memo that we got back and we put that in the bay was delivered the day of the meeting, wasn't it?
Right.
Our packet. So if you don't have that hard copy, which I couldn't find, I asked Lisa to, we sent that.
I can send that to you.
So we'll be looking at other proposals too, is that right? Okay, it's just starting up.
Just starting to get it out.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I'm behind the time.
It's okay. Really perfectly fine. No behind the time with you. Just scheduling wise, do you guys, one works day, one works night, or you guys share overlap your schedules?
We work, I work usually Monday through Friday or half a day Friday. And she works Monday through Thursday. We both answer calls at night depending, you know, we always, we're always texting who's in town, you know, that type of thing. And that's the way we wrote the contract and we wrote the job description because we wanted to get at least four days a week where we could get the second ambulance out. A lot of times.
How's that been working out?
It's been good. When, when we're there together, we've been on ambulance calls for sure. That was part of the thing is try to get to people quicker. Right now, we've got one that's out of services in the shop, so we're down one, but we should have it back in.
Has it reduced the mutual aids that you're concerned about when we proposed this position back at the town meeting?
Yes, I would say it definitely has, yes.
It also provides additional support for the duty crew, which is typically only two members. So one of us can go and pump them on a more serious medical call or back them up on a fire call. So it immediately gives us two extra bodies, two additional paramedics right out of the gate. So that's been very, very helpful for just general response because it's hard to mitigate an emergency with just two people, especially if it's bigger.
Right.
Yeah.
Mutual aid's driven by a lot of factors too, though. I know Northbridge was pretty shorthanded there for a while, so we were running over Northbridge a lot.
I only ask that question specifically because at town meeting, the chief had stood up and said that the savings of the mutual aid calls itself would pay for the positions that were just curious of that. Sort of felt that way, the way you thought, where you started talking about the, you sharing the same.
Additional revenue that would come in from not having a call covered by mutual aid partner, I think is the exact calculus.
Right. But I think there was like 38 of them, I think you said, at the town meeting.
We've certainly covered more calls. I don't have the exact number for you off the top of my head, but there's always the intangibles like I just described, having more people available to respond to an emergency, which is, as well as being able to expand our inspection program, some of our other community risk reduction programs. I've been able to get up to the schools and do education. I've been able to write grants. I've probably written over $600,000 in grants, which is paid for my position. So there's a lot of intangibles that have come along in addition to covering second ambulance calls that I think have resulted in benefits for the town financially and otherwise.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It is my view that we should do an annual review of the restricted receipts account from the revenues.
Did you review what?
The restricted receipts account. So the revenue, place where we gather the revenue. And not looking for anything in specific though, just what is the narrative? Not looking for, is the revenue up, is the revenue down? Because there were a whole bunch of counterintuitive things that happened. It was COVID, for instance. We're all locked out for the pandemic, nobody wants to go get medical care at the hospital and turn certain types of people away. So we actually saw an increase in calls, which was not what you would have thought, right? So you just got to, just ask what the story is behind the revenue figures and why it is. We, we're not in control.
It's not like you know the story behind them.
It is kind of scary. I want to start dressing like you. But, but that's because it's the truth. There's always a story behind it. Like I just said, we would not be in control of whether or not Northbridge was fully staffed and nor is, nor are we going to pick and choose if we're understaffed. We just want whoever's closest to come to us. So there's that necessary conversation every year, which is, we brought this much money in from ambulance service, why did it occur this way? It's up to them to do the analysis. It's up to the finance committee and the select to ask the questions.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And the last bullet under ARPA that I pulled up is the phone business. I think you said that our IT.
you said that our IT
Yeah, I would have named it both. Yeah, yes. I To be blunt, I've got some problems I need to fix. And one of them is the same problem that consumers have at home, which is you are dealing with a bureaucracy at Charter Spectrum that may or may not provide you with customer service to your expectation. That's one problem. Another problem is we have some equipment downstairs in the police department that needs to be replaced, period. It is obsolete, no longer serviced by the industry. It does not function. It's an old switch and it's so switch tainted that it doesn't switch no more. So we have an incumbent phone provider that was brought in five, six years ago at a discount price to do a discount job. Right? So we piggybacked the municipal center phones off of police department phone system. We only upgraded the, I'm going to make select the word a flinch here. We only upgraded to CAT, whatever it is.
CAT.
Five, I think we have CAT five in this building. But then we had CAT three. So we upgraded using the grant. But now we made the equipment that had just been installed by partners work differently than it was originally designed to work. So I've got an obsolete, not an obsolete, but a phone system that isn't quite working as well as we'd like it to because we have a vendor that designed it for something different, different set of circumstances. They also want to charge us 3,500 bucks for the switch because they will only provision one type of switch. I have a hunch that they resell that particular manufacturer's brand of switches. So they're trying to get us to pay that and say they will only service that. But our IT guys can provision the same switch for 300 bucks, which is the cost of the switch. And no time at all for provisioning because it's not that they can deal with. Not for them anyway. They feel like they can do it because they've done it a bunch of times. So in other words, I have an underperforming telephone vendor. I have a cable vendor that I can't stand. I can't get anybody to answer the phone. I know I've got more than one cable company that actually has some amount of fiber in the municipal center. Comes as a surprise to people when we do have a relationship with Verizon, separate and apart from a relationship with Spectrum. And the third problem is an ongoing problem that has been in the Capitol request process for years is to replace the phone system at the high school. Really, all the schools with the high schools replace what really is integral. So the superintendent reached out to me and said, why don't we have a townwide phone system with the same vendor? So we have one relationship and everybody's on intercom direct dial. So I don't have to dial 1508 to call the superintendent who works, you know, half a mile through the woods. We can actually just talk to each other. And I thought, well, we'll probably get a better deal if we hook up with the educational part of our operation because they're going to get better incentives to participate, which is the truth. So I have, we have the possibility of building a relationship that will take over our internet, be our vendor, people that will actually answer our phone calls and fix our network issues as they come along, who also happen to be providers of phones and security cameras. So we'd be putting devices on the network that they manage for us. And it's an elegant way to get out of all these problems that I just outlined. So that is the crux of this phone proposal. And I do believe I forwarded the actual quote and grant. There's monthly recurring charges. There are nonrecurring charges. There are annual costs of having phones that are in the cloud, so to speak, you know, voiceover internet protocol. You're an expert in it, Mr. Chairman. I am not. I'm an expert in one thing, which is being a town administrator and have to deal with phone issues. Don't want to do it. Right? I don't want to educate myself to be one tenth of Kevin Morse. I don't, in order to manage this relationship. I want to manage a vendor. I want somebody who is going to answer the phone, service the product, and resolve all of the issues from within the system that they built themselves for us. That's that's the solution I'm looking to get to. And that's why the phones actually started the conversation. But then the IT vendor, our IT consultant pointed out, well, you've got this dedicated switch. Do you also have the phone switch? There's a lot of room here. You guys need more security. Let's put some video streaming and some security onto your unused fiber capacity. It'll enhance the security of the town, make better use of the asset that you're paying for. It's good business sense to think about it that way. And it was only the last layer, once, you know, we can just get chariot ride here completely, was the last conversation. More or less completely. We're still on their equipment, but they're reselling the service to us. They have a vested interest because they're our vendor in other ways.
They advertise service or charter too as a reason.
Yeah. So that is what I'm up to here with all this granite, these quotes. And the phone has to happen because frankly, we are getting poked in the eye from time to time by the state Department of Public Safety, because our 911 POTS lines and all the rest of it that come through it just aren't forward compliant. And it needs to be. So we have to resolve the switch issue and some of the other things that are going down in the police department. So the notion that we can not do a phone system is not viable. But that doesn't mean you have to do this one. It's just the one that I'm recommending based on the efficiencies and effectiveness I get from dealing with one vendor. Does that explain?
Yes.
My position.
What part costs it, did you think, anyway?
Well, if you add up these quotes here, right, let's put the spectacles on. They're foggy. The public schools was a one-time 25,000 annual recurring cost of just about 24,000. So that has to go into the budget because that's the phone service. Town one-time expense is just under 7,000, annual recurring expense of just about $10,000. So you're looking at 35,000 into the operating budget. Mind you, partners isn't free. So we are we are paying a current member money. So this is an increase, incremental increase over what we already paid partners. Now, the school side, the capital is going to be about 31,000.
This seems like sort of a no
This is grand.
Cloud. Seems like sort of a no brainer that this is a should be a top
Well, it's not really. We talked about phone systems in the past, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, it was many, many, many thousands of dollars.
Right, a townwide phone system.
Yeah.
You just shy a million bucks. So you still would be if you were pre-emissive.
Right.
But off of the cloud, what's the, I didn't look deep enough into it, what's the term that they're looking at? Is it 36 or?
36.
36 month. It's actually a pretty good value. Seems like this is one that we should move, move ahead.
I think each and every one of the proposals you have heard has significant merit on its own.
Yeah, true.
The devil is in finding a way to rationalize your way through the prioritization process. And
Yeah, it's hard to pull them out. One little piece here and there. I think in all fairness, to the three different things that we had, and I've been supportive of the phone system right to the capital process with that, and I know that as well. But I don't think we
This seems to have fewer little wrinkles to analyze than the other two, perhaps.
Over the course of time, we're gonna have to see and hear every proposal that came through ARPA. And we have to stagger it and really understand what's in the meeting. What can we do later with large cash windfalls based off of an economic development? So there's a lot of things that we have to look at. Whether we have to start, we're working on it. Because two years happens three times, actually.
But this is one that we can get that maybe quicker than the others, because it's relatively easy to get it handled.
Is it? It's not gonna be like the last radio project. It won't take that long.
You know, I share the frustration of everybody who wants that budget to be over.
Correct.
I don't copy the select board on all the messages I sent, but I think the vendor knows how frustrated I am. I think it's better to say they get it. This is a little bit different because they're going to be working in buildings that are already here, working with a number of assets that are already in place. They don't have to climb a tower or build anything. They don't need everybody else's permission. By way of explanation, I know I've said it, but I can't say it enough. American Tower is the company that owns the tower where we need to put one of our microwave dishes. And unless and until they sign off on the installation, nothing can happen. So
They don't push easy.
So they weren't, they really weren't not. They were not prioritizing Marcus Communications at all. I had to send them a very tersely worded email message, which I'm happy to provide to you. But I made it pretty clear that any number of first responder calls had gone sideways because there was an inability of people to communicate effectively in the early stages. And then we had to kind of recover. So you're already responding to an emergency which you put yourself into harm's way because, you know, the radios don't work so great in certain parts of town. That was a problem that was supposed to have been fixed by timely installation of this system. So I've made it abundantly clear that there is a date certain by which this project has to be done, or we'll declare breach of contract and we'll get a bigger company in to finish it. Because it has to be completed. I remain cautiously optimistic because the work that Marcus has done for us to date in terms of fixing specific problems has been very, very high quality. They've been using much more modern, responsible fixes when I can run into problems. So, you know, we don't have a couple of phone lines tied together with a piece of duct tape in the closet in the private department. We did away with that.
That's unfortunate.
Yeah, I know. The duct tape salesman's very upset.
Tower companies are very stubborn and stuff they're going to work with. And you can try all you want. They do what they feel like doing, when they feel like doing. Not even the FCC, they take what they do.
So I don't know if we'll ever need another tower anywhere in town regardless or not. But the answer is to build the tower on public property, be in control of the lease, and demand of the sub lessors a portion of their rent. I will always and forever consider it one of my professional quills in my hat, that Tiffany was making about 40 grand a year on their tower sites. And I hired a company called Steel in the Air to negotiate a new contract. And we were all done with them. It was 350 grand a year. Because you just, you have to realize, they need you more than you could ever need them. They're dropping calls. They're losing business. They need that tower to be where it is. So you have all the bargaining power in the world if you own the property and beat that tower. These privates know that all that money's going to whoever made these private deals. And maybe they weren't savvy enough to get a good deal, but there's money to be made with these towers. That's why they're built.
If you have the lease of the tower, then you have leverage. But if you don't, there's no leverage to be had with it.
No leverage. It's all by goodwill. And the thing that, it works in reverse in a way, Mr. Chairman, because since we don't pay rent to be on their tower, we can't even tell them, well, if you don't hurry up, we'll withhold our rent. We can't even say that because we're there for free.
So that's a long-term game plan is to have our own tower?
Well, I mean, you know, if there's another one built anywhere, you know, I'm gonna put it out there. Then we own a couple hilltops. Maybe they want to look at our hilltops. That's where they want to be. They want to be in a hole. All right, we're laboring the topic. That's really the
All right. So we've been asked to pass over number nine, which brings us to discussion of earth removal by law and possible works.
I'll be right back.
You have permission?
Yes. Can I have your permission now?
Do you want it to look like this?
Fury out of bathroom.
Right? It's kind of rough here, Mac. Is this what you want it to look like?
Yes, office. And I think that there was Max, that was the best I could do.
A black background?
Right.
Well, I suppose that's implausible.
Come on.
Fire away. Pretend he's here.
Would you like to start, Mr. West? Do you? What do you want?
To keep the media moving.
Why don't you explain what this is all about so everybody will understand it for the viewing public? So for the record, for the viewing public, my name's Matthew, but I am the director of community development here with Ken Fraser as the building commissioner. Ken and I have collaborated and have been working together on multiple projects in town for some time now, since I started here in October, coming up in here, believe it or not. And just one of the things that we've noticed has been kind of thrown in our side with interpretation from multiple angles has been the earth removal zoning bylaw under section 6.1. So Ken and I had had worked on some modifications to that bylaw. And originally had proposed this as a modification to the zoning bylaw under section 6.1. For standard protocol, for articles going to town meeting, we sent out the town council first before it came to the board of select. And town council came back and recommended that due to some of the exemptions and issues that arise with zoning bylaws, you see, he recommended to us that this move over to a general bylaw. So I reworked the language and noticed we were absent in article 12. So we worked this into the general bylaws instead for town council recommendation with some of the other changes that they also recommended. What's in your packet is a clean version that doesn't show the track changes, I believe?
No, we have the track.
Okay, so you do have changes still here. So there were changes, obviously, from Ken and I. What you will see in black is what's originally in section 6.1 of the zoning bylaws today. The red is canonized changes. And some of the blue, you'll see also, you've got color copies, was town council recommendations. Happy to answer any questions you have, but the longer the shorter this is, is that there was a gray area between the limit, or at least the 300 cubic yard threshold that existed previously, and interpretations of some of the exemptions you see crossed off in your copy. And the gray area we'd like, and I'm sure Mr. Fraser can elaborate further, is that setting a more clear number of cubic yards at a threshold that's reasonable is much easier to enforce without the gray interpretation of some of the exceptions here. Ken, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, we started looking at the basic number of material that they had put into the zoning before, being approximately 300 cubic yards. And it became an issue with one of the projects in town. Just they were utilizing building permits to exceed that number. So with this 1,000 cubic yards, figuring it out with the subject system, the foundation, installation work to that area, 1,000 yards should be well within the ability to build a house on that site. Anything over that would be questioned, Mr. What do you think? Just sets up a more firm guideline instead of just a, I guess, 300 plus minus yards that could be exceeded before. Any backlash to it?
Part of the issue was it read as if things were just plain exempt. Some building-related activity was exempt. It didn't have a threshold whatsoever. So any developer who has a subdivision could almost So any developer who has a subdivision could almost disguise mining operation under the witness brief. So again, the reason we're here now is not to try to get a vote or try to push this yet, but we wanted to at least introduce this. We understand that it could be a couple meetings here, but if this is to be considered fault, I'm gay. As a general bylaw, it doesn't have to go back to the planning board or the motor or anything like that. But one of the key things here is that jurisdictionally, this was something that the planning board took care of previously under zoning bylaws. As I'm introducing it today, it does show the select board as the perfect granting authority. And the reason I did that is because I believe it is the select board's decision to decide who they want to delegate this to, if not keep it for themselves. So I'm open to the board's recommendation after with the perfect granting authority. The people that's back. So just wanted to make sure I just stay. Have to answer any questions the board has?
Any impact of this on our major projects, which are on the ground boys?
Go ahead. To the chair, sorry, to Mr. Neres. No, anything that's currently, has an application in would be frozen to any of the zoning that's in place before this.
Or we've got some other buildings that are at that stage level. Do you think it's, is this an added burden to the developers that are proposing additional buildings?
Good question.
I think you find that with, you know, when you're talking, I assume you're talking mostly on the commercial aspect with some of the bigger projects. Most of those projects are not even removing materials or bringing material in or kind of filled type setups. So, I mean, when they're getting into a major amount of filled removal and everything, that's, when planning boards looking at the project, the assumption that planning board is also taking into consideration what delegations are going to be involved in that.
Mr. Chairman, we do know that with CRG's proposal for the McIntyre pit, there will, that will be a net importer of material. We won't be removing material off site.
You had the project that you were referring to earlier. There was an issue about the original earth removal permit prohibitive going within a hundred feet of the property. And I see that you have that on the second page here on the C, section seven. But that refers to a permit, so it would be the earth removal permit would stop doing that on a residential permit.
Go ahead. To the chair, Mr. Westier. Sorry, just want to make sure I understand that. The, you're saying that a hundred-foot buffer zone to a neighbor? You're asking whether or not that would still be implied? I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand the question.
Okay, so, I'm going to use that project that's on the northeast mainstream. The original plan was to stay at least a hundred feet away from the watering property. Then when they transferred and then you closed the earth removal permit, you transferred it to a building permit, you found a loophole and you went through the process. So now you're saying it within a hundred feet. But you could shave the top of that, it's starting to change it because you've got a thousand feet to play with on each lot. So if the lot's only two hundred feet wide, you could actually go back into that hundred-foot buffer. So is there something that you could put in there that if it was an earth removal permit such as mine, that your initial use is for an earth removal, what's your right use of that? That should play into the decision, I would think.
I understand. To the chair. I understand what you're saying. So there was the original earth removal permit for the roadway. Construction of the roadway and the stormwater system established a hundred-foot buffer zone.
Where that was on?
Right, it bisected the lots, right? So once that permit was closed out, those lots were leased, those lots become individual lots. And they could, in that case, require their own earth removal permit. And that hundred-foot buffer zone of the closed-out earth removal permit essentially vanishes in the sense that you need to apply for a permit. This does not solve that problem because we're dealing with subdivision regulations.
Well, it's just a consideration because that had the end result, the end result of that particular project. I don't know if you guys have been buying it at all, but you should go buy at some point off my grocery. Because I just go poof, it's gone. Where originally, when they went through the whole public hearing process, they were on the impression that they were going to maintain a hundred-foot buffer to that.
I remember that.
Huh?
I remember that.
And that went transferred into a residential development. That hundred-foot went away and then all of a sudden, their property isn't what it used to be. I don't know if you can capture any of that concern in this. It's just something that, I think that's what triggered your whole thought process on this. So you might, might want to think about that.
I go to the chair, go ahead.
With this thousand cubic yards, I don't, I don't know that you would be as extreme a situation as what we had down there. A thousand cubic yards, and when you put your foundation, your septic, your driveway in, you're going to use up that thousand cubic yards. So to, to tell somebody that they probably can't go into that hundred-foot tub back, they're not really doing an earth removal, now if they're going over a thousand yards, I believe that's covered, that's all part of that earth removal permit that may or may not be required.
If they stop and think about how you would break up the lot. So if you do it in a pie shape, and you start having them all come back, you could go into each individual lot and stay under a thousand cubic yards. And as an aggregate amount, you could take out fifty thousand, yes. If there was enough lots to make that pie shape. So you could be two hundred feet in the front, but you could go back to the fifty feet in the back. And that's going to be, depending on how that, if it's going around the, around the cul-de-sac type, the outside circle.
Sure.
So it's just a good sort of machine, that's all.
That's good.
I'm not trying to complicate it, but this is what drove your whole thought process in this. So just something to think about, that's all.
That's a good point. Part of the issue we had with that project, obviously, was that taking the material down to bring the house to grade, the males put that backyard, as you just pointed out.
Well, it was unfortunate to the planning neighbors because it drastically changed their property.
The way the bylaw ran at the time, it just, it could be interpreted by others that it almost seemed like the entire thing was exempt. And that's, that's the problem that I'm going to eliminate by setting that thousand cubic yard threshold, regardless of nectar removal of materials, period.
That's a very unique situation. Just something to consider, that's all.
Mr. Chairman, one modification that we did make that is not, is under section three exemptions, the first sentence reads, "Building-related activities," excuse me, the second sentence under letter A, reads "Building-related activities" as follows with a definition. Actually, in speaking with Mr. Westier today, we decided to not try to define "building-related activities," you know, something that's listed in the law. Instead of defining that, define it as the removal of soil, loam, sand, gravel, clay, deep rock, and other earth materials of less than one thousand cubic yards. So we're just talking about materials. We're not trying to get webbed definitions of what building what.
Well, that's what happened in the last one, it got tied to something.
Exactly. So we thought the exemption should just read, "Less than a thousand cubic yards of material." And then the other exemption being a use of some material.
Less opportunity you have for something that would out rabbit hole better off you are.
So that modification is not in front of the board numbers today. And the point here is to collect comments, make any changes, bring it back to the next meeting. And for consideration for more.
You have a question, gentlemen?
Is the earth, sorry, this is a submission. Although it will say earth removal, it's not my forte. The Earth Removal Advisory Committee, the kind of flexibility will that have? Meaning, yes, you outlined it here, but if something doesn't seem right, something feels like it's going to be what we see at my place, will they have the opportunity just to refuse it?
Well, the advisory committee is a subcommittee created by the select board that would come back with a recommendation, correct?
Yes, we have, that's my understanding, come back with a recommendation to the board.
So they wouldn't have any power other than to say, "I think you should do this," but you can say, "No, I don't think so."
Well, and that kind of speaks to my original start of the sentence was my knowledge of earth removal and what it does, which it actually is not, but I would seek the guidance of people that know to, put it in layman's terms. And at that point, I don't mind.
So we don't put them on the committee?
Yeah, I don't want that committee.
But you can make the planning board your committee. You can make some combination of planning and conservation, you're completely...
You could dump it on Tim's properties, you get an idea of the ball.
A thousand cubic yards is kind of a lot.
You don't want to try and spread that a lot.
If you had to spread that, well, it's a real challenge.
It sounds like a lot, but like Matt and I were talking about it when this other property came up and a thirty-by-fifty foundation would require to, and a thirty-six, a thirty-three, yeah, dirt to come out of that, six feet deep to put in a house. So not, actually, not that much to start to think of when doing the septic system into a detached garage or whatever, you can get pretty close to it pretty quick.
Mr. Chairman, that's one of the things that Ken and I, or Ken really knows this stuff better than I, that particular stuff better than I do. Size of foundation, septic system, inground swimming pool, he can kind of rent the numbers on a few of those things. On some average-sized homes, and that's how we fell out, a thousand cubic yards. I want to make sure something like that could stay under, but something larger wouldn't.
It would trigger something. Makes sense?
I would think that would be discretionary with the building commissioner. If something came with a reasonable project and let me eleven hundred cubic yards, you'd have to push them to go get an earth removal permit, I would think.
It would still be, you know, it's a guideline to go by. Something more than what we have now, the three hundred yards, it's just, it's not even a number that's feasible to pursue fully. So it's just, it's a good guideline to work off. Would they still need to go in front of the board? Probably, but it would be very explanation, very easy explanation as to what it was. I'm doing a four thousand square foot house with a five-inch septic, it's going to be twelve hundred cubic yards.
Oh, okay.
Well, even that simple project, ninety-three Davis Street, a pretty simple project. That triggered three hundred cubic yards, if they went in that direction. It was never brought up, but that pile of dirt was over two hundred cubic yards. So, but that's a pretty simple little project that should be just a lot of done and create a commercial space.
Mr. Chairman, a couple things, Dean, including you want the perfect granting authority to be? This is kind of my question, sorry. Here's the board, thanks.
Want to think about it? Okay, you got to come back again?
Yes. Next meeting if that's good.
Well, other determinations to, by then, what's that? All right. Fun fact.
Is that it, guys?
You guys plan to coordinate tonight?
The memo goes out every Monday. It was late this week, but they kept up.
Mr. Chairman, one day, all four of us in the office, all more of a room on pure chance. Everyone's smiling now.
It's good synergy.
So good night.
Blue tomorrow.
Approved minutes and possible votes? Made in second, any further discussion? See, if it's not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Your report, Mr. Administrator.
Given the lateness of the hour, I'm going to just keep it brief. Next week, Bob and Eric and I will travel to Boston to have a meeting with the Attorney General's Office regarding the town's petition to the Department of Public Utilities to grant a franchise to Eversource to provide natural gas in Town Douglas. I'll be updating you as we get closer to that meeting in context of that meeting. But I think we are all very much aware of the dynamic that some state officials have taken a hard stance on the expansion of fossil fuel utilities. And at the same time, we have reality, reality on the ground that if we could get one hundred percent unanimous consensus from the residents of Town Douglas that they want to electrify everything tomorrow, it would be five, six, seven years before it would even happen. Because the town is bad, we are at the end of a number of feeder lines for electricity. They're not all married together neatly. And we are not always using the capacity in the way that's anticipated by the Department of Public Utilities. So we have one electrical line that feeds the town that is oversubscribed. So it's at about a hundred fifteen, hundred twenty percent capacity. It doesn't blow up because people just don't use their full load all the time. But theoretically, the line is oversubscribed. And I could go on and on and on and on, but at the end of the day, to electrify large portions of the town, we would need a substation. And that's five million dollars, eight million dollars, five years away. We need solutions for economic development in the near term. So the conversation, hopefully, will be a mature adult conversation. We'll talk about practical considerations and how to make projects go forward. And if we need to demonstrate goodwill towards the state's overall goals, we can certainly find ways to do that within the mandate, but still do our projects. Especially since the state has already committed most of the funds that have already been buried in the ground and formed a pipe. So, but it's an important meeting, so. It was supposed to be today, so I didn't put my Peyton duds on today. So that brings me to my second point, clumsy segue. I know there were a lot of residents in Town Hall voting today to see me working out here, ask, "What's going on, why are you working?" And we sourced through them and I said, "Well, fixing up the office." The town administrator's office has not changed in many years. It's a nasty old rug in there, walls that never been painted, it was white, sort of a dark, crowded space. All of the things that are going to happen in that office space are at my expense, not the town's. To be blunt, I just wanted a nicer place to come and work every day. A long commute, I spent a lot of hours in front of the computer. I want to be comfortable in the space, be able to have meetings in my space, without the clutter, without, you know, the office supply cabinet, files that shouldn't be in my office because personnel files should be behind a lock and pull. Just clear all that stuff out of there. But the furniture, you know, the desks are at my expense. Refinishing the floor at my expense. The furniture, I will probably retain title to it. And I'm buying it, but if I leave, I'll take it with me. It's only fair, the next town administrator will have a blank slate to work with. But they'll have maple floor where there was a rug. This building has many beautiful historic features in it that the original committee, when this building was built, you know, designed. And they also bought all of the furniture for the school building from one vendor that specifically set up the whole package in terms of chairs and hutchers and displays and built-in woodwork. It was all done by one manufacturer. And their stuff is sought after all by antique dealers all across the country. We have a beautiful building here. It's all been covered up with some interesting color choices and some really old rugs. But this might be the start of a bigger conversation about how to make the building worthy of Douglas. But in this case, no taxpayer dollars will be spent. But it's just something I really felt like I wanted to do for the town and for myself, just to be able to...
Have a clue that means you're planning to stay a while?
Yeah, I could have a positive vibe, right? It's all about Feng Shui. I'm sitting there with my, my back to the door. So I don't even greet people when they're at my door, I don't even know that they're, so it's just not, not good. So that was just a personal...
It made me a while before you pulled the rug up.
I may not pull up rug, he, he does so. There was a lot of glue under that rug. And to Selectman Fitzpatrick's credit, and I'm very grateful, he did most of the work. Because he still has a strong back, but he's gone. But getting that glue up was a real pain in the back.
It was for mental therapy.
He needed it, I guess. Scraping a floor is going to be very zen. As for the rest of it, Mr. Chairman, I think... As for the rest of it, Mr. Chairman, I think I'll just let the meeting move on a little bit here. We are, you know, getting ready for the fall, I will just say this much, with the personnel compensation proposal. And it's going to take me, you know, a good few days to work it out, get something in front of you before the 20th. But it is my intention to have a well-rounded, they put a lot of time and research into it, now it's a question of pulling it all together, so I'm not starting from scratch, I have a lot already done. It's just, these systems have to have an internal logic to them. An employee has to be able to plot their career path with clear milestones, and I'm just trying to make sure that those milestones are achievable. But most of all, I'm hoping that I can design a system where the top step has nobody in it. Because there needs to be room for growth, so people who've been here for a long time still have the opportunity to better themselves for the benefit of the town, and earn a little bit more as a result. But the town's getting the benefit of the extra training, the extra experience. So that's the goal, is to leave some so-called headroom for the beer to go up the neck of the bottle without bothering the town. That a good image? Nine fifteen, that's a pretty good image.
Works for me.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Matt. Are there any open session topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I just, this was under, Mr. Chairman, if you'll beg your forgiveness.
Sure.
The governor signed a marijuana reform bill into law, it significantly changes the approaches that municipalities have to take. This is fresh, hot off the presses, copy for each one of you, but there are significant changes now to the way municipalities must deal with marijuana establishments, and to steer clear of those pitfalls we need to comply with.
Basically, you see a revenue loss from what we anticipated.
Wait, say that again? What is it?
Revenue loss from what we anticipated.
Right, so they kind of pulled up.
I haven't fully read this. So, Mr. Chairman, to answer Selectman Vaughn's question, on a go-forward basis, it will be very difficult, if not impossible, to get an impact fee. The open question is, what is the CCC going to do with those HCAs that are already in place and that the party already agreed to, in order to get the privilege to get the license? And there's a mixed, there are mixed feelings about where the commission's going to go with that.
Nothing in the light of...
I don't think anything the Town of Douglas has done has been unnecessarily punitive or exploitative. You know, 3% was pretty much where a lot of the more modest communities ended up. Town meeting also passed the excise tax, so the Town of Douglas gets a share of the excise tax. So is it a pure loss? No, because we'll still get the excise tax, the 3%. And I would say that by the time they get around to sorting this out in the courts, we will already collected all the money due to us under HCAs. The question is whether our partners would seek it back. With at least one grown, I can make out a really strong case that all of the improvement projects the town has done, that that building benefits from, that the value of that building far, far exceeds what they gave us for impact fees. Not even close.
The gas.
Well, if gas goes there, that's completely ridiculous, right? But just having water and sewer, being able to connect to a proper-sized line outside and take their fire suppression from a mudhole across the street onto a 12-inch main with pressure and flow in it, I'm sorry, I think we've done more than enough to earn our impact fee for that building, so I'm not inclined to be overly generous trying to renegotiate that. So, I'm sorry, but new law, something to read. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Other than that, is there anything else not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting?
I got one.
Huh?
I got one.
What is it?
So, I just felt it was important to acknowledge the efforts of the town administrator, as well as Bob Sullivan and Matt and like a couple other people that have been mentioned in recent articles and in paper and Facebook posts and stuff like that, I think, with his, with the town administrator's experience, knowledge, and commitment to get the economic development going. I'd just like the public to thank him for his efforts that he's got us to work out today.
Mr. Chairman, thank the voice, Chairman. I just want to make you, I want people to understand how this works. And I'm a baseball guy, so I use baseball images. You know, Bob and Eric is the starting pitcher. His job is to get us deep into the game, keep our negotiating partners happy with the situation, keep them off bats, right? Keep them off the base paths. And he only needs me to be involved when it's time to close the game. So part of my role in this is to know when it is time for him to hand the ball over to me. And then I have to execute. It's not just a managerial decision, player coach, I have to come in and actually close team. So that's why I'm going to Boston with him for that meeting, is why I've been engaged at the end of a lot of these processes, when the application has a couple of pieces left, I'm not going to do all 12 sections of a 12-section application, but if there's one that is absolutely essential and nobody knows how to do it, I'll step in and do it. And that's the division of labor.
In the past, as we've gone along through this process, but you're probably giving the credit to everybody else if you don't get any credit.
Sounds like Kofax and Drysdale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
But I don't use baseball, I use it more like Patrick Swayze in The Roadhouse.
Okay.
Patrick Swayze made the meeting.
Yeah, Roadhouse, you don't remember that movie?
I love that movie.
So the bar and grill that inspired the movie actually burned to the ground by a shooting in New York.
The Forky?
No, 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 Roadhouse, with...
Patrick Swayze?
Roadhouse, lots of fake martial arts fighting.
Now I can't even think of Wade Garrett's real name.
Sam Elliott.
Yeah, Sam Elliott.
Not that you've ever watched it, or...
Did he get the girl at the end?
Unfortunately.
I don't know, probably.
My mother, God rest her soul, was a Patrick Swayze and a Sam Elliott fan, so that was double death right there.
Sam Elliott was a good actor. All right, we still have a little bit of...
All right, I would make the motion, Mr. Chairman, if you'd be so kind to allow me to.
I would like you to.
We're actually encouraging you to.
Please let me do this. I've moved into executive session for the purposes of conducting strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or maybe to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and to also talk collective bargaining, and then to leave that executive session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second. Excellent. Made in seconded. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
It's Patrick, aye.
Swayze, aye. Paul, an aye.
David, aye. Morsa, aye.
Nine fifteen, a foot back.